Up next, we have roll call.
And Councilor Carson and Daniel, I'll just get your voice vote.
Here, Councilor Daniel.
Thank you.
Councilor Carson here.
Okay, Ms. Martinez. You want ours too? Here?
Well, you don't have to do a voice vote. You could've. I didn't see it come through.
Oh, you didn't? Okay, I'll do it again.
Okay, all councilors present and a quorum has been declared.
Okay, thank you very much. That brings us to the next item on the agenda, the agenda approval. Mayor, I move that we approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Not, please start voting. Ms. Martinez?
Councilor Daniel?
Yes.
Councilor Carson?
Yes.
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay, thank you. But next on the agenda, we have citizen comments. This is the segment of the agenda where if anyone in the audience had turned in a comment card, you would come up to the podium and make your comments. We do ask that you keep your comments to within three minutes. If you're still talking at the three-minute mark, in which we do have a timer right there, I will politely ask you to end the conversation at that time. Okay, Ms. Martinez, I don't have any comment cards from the audience.
I do not have any either, Mayor.
Okay, if you don't mind, can you give instructions to the Zoom attendees of how they can raise their hand so we can recognize them?
Yes, sir. If you're on the Zoom app and you want to make a citizen comment, you could raise your hand by clicking the button at the bottom of your screen. Or if you're on a telephone, you'll dial star nine. Mayor, I don't see anyone raising their hand.
Okay, so I am going to end this segment of the agenda for citizen comments. We're moving down to the next item, and that's ceremonial items. We have, the first item is disability awareness proclamation. I have a group of ladies who are in the audience. They asked me to recognize them as the crew. So if we can have the crew come up to the mic and share some information with us, I'll read that proclamation.
Hi, yes, my name is Amy Raya. I'm with the Salmo Valley Bosse's. This is Lupita. Oh, let us all introduce ourselves.
Lupita Garcia with Energy Resource Center.
And Marie Harrelson with Alamosa Workforce Center.
So we want to come together and have a proclamation to declare October, which was last month, Disability Awareness Month. And so we just want to make sure and declare throughout the city of Alamosa that we are hiring people, able bodies, that have disabilities, whether they're learning, physical, mental health, medical, that they have that equal opportunity, just as anybody else, to apply for those positions and to get the job.
Okay, council, any comments before I read the proclamation? Okay, so I'll read the proclamation, and then all of us will come down and present the proclamation to you, and we'll take a picture at that time as well, okay? All right, proclamation recognizing and commemorating the seventy-seventh anniversary of National Disability Awareness Month. Whereas October twenty twenty-two marks the seventy-seventh anniversary of National Disability Employment Awareness Month. And whereas the purpose of National Disability Employment Awareness Month is to educate about disability employment issues and celebrate the many and varied contributions of America's workers with disabilities. And whereas the history of National Disability Employment Awareness Month traces back to nineteen forty-five, when Congress enacted a law declaring the first week of October each year National Employ the Physically Handicapped Week. And whereas in nineteen sixty-two, the word physically was removed to acknowledge the employment need of contributions of individuals with all types of disabilities. And whereas in nineteen eighty-eight, Congress expanded the week to a month and changed the name to National Disability Employment Awareness Month. And whereas workplaces welcoming of the talents of all people, including people with disabilities, are a critical part of our efforts to build an inclusive community and strong economy. And whereas activities during this month will reinforce the value and talent people with disabilities add to our workplaces and communities and affirm Alamosa's commitment to an inclusive community that increases access and opportunities to all, including individuals with disabilities. Therefore, be it resolved that the city of Alamosa recognizes and commemorates the seventy-seventh anniversary of National Disability Employment Awareness Month. And be it further resolved that the city of Alamosa call upon employers, schools, and other community organizations in Alamosa to observe October with appropriate programs and activities and to advance its important message that people with disabilities add value and talent to our workplaces and communities. And be it further resolved, the city of Alamosa pledges to continue to take steps throughout the year to recruit, hire, retain, and advance individuals with disabilities and work to pursue the goals of opportunity for participation, economic self-sufficiency, and independent living for all people with disabilities. Given under my hand and seal, the city of Alamosa, the second day of November twenty twenty-two. All right.
Can I say something else?
Sure, please.
I forgot. If y'all looked at the newspaper last or yesterday, we have a group called Tiger, so that's a transition interagency group envisioning the realization of self, and that's employing youth and young adults. And so we had three employers, Sierra Grand School, Sanford School District, and Sweet Life Bakery, who hired youth and young adults with a disability. And so we do that every year as a group. We pick employers who have hired or have given some sort of job opportunity, on-the-job training, job coaching, maybe just an informational interview, any type of work experience, whether it was paid, unpaid, community service, that are willing to hire or willing just to train them, youth and young adults. And so we do that every year, and so yesterday showed that we kind of gave them a nice PR, but continued partnership with employers around the Salmo Valley.
Well, we want to thank you for your efforts and thank you for bringing the awareness to our entire community. Really appreciate everything you all do. All right. Okay, that brings us to the next item on the ceremonial items, introduction of our new fire chief, Bill Stone. I'm quite sure we're gonna have them all come up here.
Yeah, so if I could have both Chief Stone and Chief Chapman coming up. So this is an interesting meeting because this is Chief Stone's first city council meeting of become many. And it's Chief Chapman's last city council meeting after many. So bittersweet, so some excitement, but also sad to have someone like Don leaving. And so, you know, as a reminder to everyone, you know, Don has committed thirty-nine years of his life to the fire service community. Obviously, he's done a lot longer to the community as a whole in his other positions, but then the last seventeen years as chief, and that's a lot of nights, it's a lot of calls, it's a lot of different scenarios that he's seen through those years. But when I listen to individuals talk at the retirement ceremony for both the chief and assistant chief, and what they've done for this department from really not having the equipment and working to make sure that's a stable and that that's constant, and the apparatus and that safety is such a big deal. It's a legacy, and I know Don would say that, you know, the crews and the partners and everyone else play as much of a role as he does, but clearly, he was at the helm. So I want to take this opportunity to say thank you again. Your retirement ceremony was cut a little short. We do have cheesecake floating around somewhere, so you can have some. So you will get some before you leave on Friday. But now to turn it over to announcing Chief Stone. He has twenty-six years in the fire service, twenty-one of those in the fire line with the Boise Fire Department, and then five years as Division Chief of Training for the Eagle Fire Department, both in Idaho. I think what's really been exciting for our community is his connection to Alamosa and Adam State University. He fully knew what he and his wife were moving to. They were looking to try to come to Colorado, and he had kept his eye on what was going on here. And so it's pretty amazing that, as we looked at transition from someone with Chief Chapman, that we had this opportunity with Chief Stone. And so he does have a BA in Psychology from Adam State University and an AA in Fire Science from Spokane Community College. And with that, I'll turn it over to either one of you if you want to make some comments.
Well, we're sharing the show. I just, once again, want to thank Don for his mentorship the past couple of weeks, showing me a myriad of things that I have to understand. I've met more people condensed in these two weeks than perhaps half of my lifetime. So it's been a real challenge catching up with names and jobs and titles and everything. I want to thank city manager Heather and Chief Anderson and everybody who's had a part in getting me here. It's meant a lot to come back to Alamosa. I really look forward to continuing what Don has started in keeping everybody safe, both firefighters and the community. Just very happy to be here. If anybody has any questions, fire away.
Okay, we will do that just here in a second. Counsel, any counsel comments? Counsel Grego?
I got my signal.
I saw the motion.
Heather, you did say a lot when you said that there was times that we didn't have the equipment that we have today. And to have a team of volunteers back then, keeping it together, you know, it's, you know, keeping our community safe. Don, Tony, and the rest of the group, boy, they stuck together, you know? One thing that I failed to mention at your ceremony was that this beautiful building that we got today was in part because of the fire department. We brought the executive director down, and she was touring our place, and we had him turn on the fire engines in there. All those fumes would always come into the city manager's office. So she got a taste to see that, so. And at a time when money was real tight, we were able to, we were half a million dollars from the state for this building, you know? And it's something that, you know, you are fitting, filling some big shoes there. And I'm sure you'll do a great job, but having people like Don and Tony and the rest guys born and raised here, you know, it's something that's, it's, you know, slowly but surely disappearing. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Grego. Counsel Hensley?
So just before the meeting, I asked Don, I said, what's he gonna do on Wednesdays? And he said, rest in his recliner. And so I will start imagining or visioning on Wednesdays, you in your recliner. I know you're gonna miss us, but at the same time, I'm sure your recliner has been missing you for the last thirty-nine years, and you deserve to actually do that. I do appreciate everything you've done for us, and you deserve some nice relaxation. So I hope you enjoy it. Chief Stone, I'm not sure, and maybe it's, you look familiar or you look similar to somebody, but honestly, when I saw you back there, I thought you looked familiar. How long has it been since you've lived here?
My last date I was here was nineteen eighty-eight.
Okay.
So I was here from roughly nineteen eighty-three to eighty-eight, attending school and then coaching football as well.
Okay, well, welcome back.
Thank you very much.
Uh-huh.
Nice to be back.
Counsel Beal. Thank you, Mayor. Welcome. Chief Chapman?
I apologize I couldn't make it to your retirement party, but thanks for your service and getting our fire department mainstream and kicking butt, and just appreciate all your time.
Thank you.
And then Chief Stone, my father-in-law knows Chief Stone. I think, and then his brother, I think, coached you at Adam State. But my father-in-law said that Chief Stone was a pretty killer running back back in the day. So he bleeds green, he bleeds green, so that's cool. Thank you, Chief. You're welcome. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counsel Beal. I'm gonna check and see if our council members up on Zoom would like to say anything before I wrap things up.
Both chiefs, I'm so, Chief Chapman, we are gonna miss you. Chief Stone, I'm very excited to have you on board, and I'm looking forward to, I think our really strong tradition of solid fire service and support to our community will continue under your leadership. And I really want to thank Chief Chapman for paving the way thus far. So thank you to you both, and I'm looking forward to moving forward and growing as we go.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Don, I just want to say farewell for a bit and enjoy your retirement. I'm pretty sure you're not gonna sit still too much, and that recliner might get a little bit of you, but I don't see it relaxing as much as I bet you'd like to. And to the new chief, welcome, and Godspeed. Hope you enjoy the being here, and I look forward to meeting you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Look forward to meet you too.
Thank you.
Okay, well, I'll wrap everything up. Chief Chapman, once again, thank you for your service. And as I mentioned, at your retirement party, you are the epitome of a true leader, and we appreciate your leadership. The one thing I ask that you do in your retirement for me is make sure that you pull that raft out and go whitewater rafting like you used to do before you got too caught up. Make sure you do some of that. Have fun.
We're definitely planning on that.
I'll be monitoring your Facebook page. Confirmation.
I'll probably lose my phone somewhere in the water, so.
Okay, and Chief Stone, welcome to the team. And I could validate what Counsel Beal said about him being an awesome running back and also a coach. He actually coached my little brother when he came to Adam State and played football. So we wish you much success in all your endeavors here as well.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
For those of you who didn't attend the retirement ceremony, I'm just gonna point out that Chief Chapman was the scariest part of my interview process when I was coming from my position. So it's changed since that first interaction, and I learned he's a good poker player.
Thank you, Ms. Brooks. Okay, that brings us to the next item on our agenda under ceremonial items, introduction of Ariel with our deputy clerk.
So kind of hard to follow up to them. I should have put them last and did us first, but it's okay. So this is Ariel Portillo Lawson. She's our new deputy clerk in the office. She comes from a background of, in the retail industry for about ten years. She was at City Market most recently for six. But she does bring some education to our departments. So she has a Bachelor's of Arts in Business Administration with an emphasis in marketing and a minor in graphic design. So really excited for her background that she's bringing to the team. She is from Denver originally, but she has family here, so she's settled down around here. So we're so excited to have her on our team, and I think she's gonna be a great addition for us. I told her she's probably gonna be the one to bring out our personalities and bring us out of our turtle shells, but, because she dressed up for Halloween and we didn't. So I was like, yeah, you're gonna bring us out of our shells, probably.
All right.
Well, thank you, guys, for allowing me to come and meet you all. I'm excited to start the team here with the city and the clerks. I'm excited. I've been training a week and a half now. They keep teasing me to tell me that we'll see after Monday, because we have court on Monday, so we'll see how that goes. But if you guys have any questions, I'm open.
Okay, I'll open up the mic to council members for comments. Counsel Henson?
I'll just say welcome, Ariel. How long have you been here in the valley?
I've been living here for the past five and a half years. I've been on and off my whole life. My grandparents are from outside of San Luis, so we used to come and spend the summers up here.
Awesome. Well, welcome. I'm really excited to work with you.
All righty, let me go to our Zoom participants, since I don't see any lights here. Any comments on Zoom? Okay, all right. Welcome, welcome again. Thank you so much for joining our team, and we look forward to working with you here in the future.
Thank you, guys.
You're welcome. That brings us to the next item on the agenda under our accounting team, the introduction of Elaine Johnson.
Good evening, council. Am I on?
No.
I'm never on.
There you go.
I always do the wrong thing.
Turn it back off. There you go.
Good evening, council and mayor. We are so excited to introduce Elaine Johnson to you tonight. She brings a wealth of knowledge to our accounting department, and we are just so excited to have her. She was many, many years at Walmart in their accounting office, and then she was over at the county for another many, many years. So she just hit the ground running after Sophie's retirement, and she, we've kept her busy, and she just, from day one, has just done the work and fit into the group so well. I think she knows half of Alamosa, everyone who comes to the window she's talking to, and she knows half the staff already before she got here. She's a wonderful person, and we are just so excited to have her and so lucky to have her with us. So please welcome her tonight.
Right.
Elaine, do you want to say a few things?
I'm just excited to be a part of the team of the city. I did work for the county for eight years in the treasurer's office. So I do have an accounting background of over twenty years, but it's been awesome so far, and I look forward to learning more, because I love to learn.
And we really can tell her accounting expertise has been amazing. Like I said, we're blessed to have her with us.
Wow, that is, that's awesome, awesome. Any comments here, counsel? Counsel Hensley?
Well, I will say again, welcome. I think it's great to have you. I think it's funny, you kind of think of accountants, so even when you said you were at Walmart and things like that, you, accountants tend to be behind the scenes. So it is interesting that you're knowing so many people, and people know you, even though you're behind the scenes, so having a social accountant is pretty cool.
Hey. The reputation that accountants have is undeserved. But I am the biggest introvert you'll meet ever, so it is really nice to have somebody who's a little more social. And Sophie was our social butterfly, so we definitely needed to fill that need in our office, so it's great.
I was born and raised here in the valley, so I do know a lot of people.
That's awesome.
My dad is actually a commissioner in Costia County. His name's Robert Espinoza.
Good, good. Well, thank you for joining our team in your dual role capacity as a social butterfly and an accountant.
And a good accountant.
And a good accountant. So we welcome you to our team and wish you the best, okay?
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, thank you. All right, that brings us to the next person we're gonna introduce. Megan, okay, Rachel's up here. All right, good deal.
Good evening, council. I get to be at the smaller podium because it's more appropriate. So this is Megan Duddleston. She is a product of joint custody between Public Works and Development Services, and I am far more entertaining than Harry, so he made me come up here. He also wants me to do some of my terrible jokes, but I was like, why would they laugh if they're terrible? So Megan is an Alamosa native, and she left to move to Colorado Springs for about seventeen years. She went to high school there, and then we got her back. So she's been back for about three years, and she's worked in banking, she's worked in HR, and she's worked in retail management. So she has a lot of skills, mostly she's just delightful, and she just brings light and laughter into our office. I don't think Nicole has ever been this happy. I don't think Nicole realized how lonely she was, because DS is a bunch of weirdos, and Megan is wonderful and normal and full of light, and she answers the weirdest questions from the public with total aplomb. She got yelled on like her second day, and she was just like, oh, please. So she's wonderful.
Well, I'm happy to be here. I'm a talker, so lucky for Nicole. She gets to listen to me all day, and anybody else that'll listen, to be honest. But thanks for having me, guys.
Welcome, welcome. Counsel Henson?
So I guess I'm the welcoming committee. So I guess who gets Monday, Wednesday, and Tuesday, Thursday, and everybody? Somebody gets every other Friday? Is that how it works?
Yeah.
And then what Nicole really gets is a new stepsister, huh? There you go. Welcome. I'm glad you're here, and it's great to have you.
Thank you.
Yes.
I forgot that the favorite part of Harry's joke is that he pays child support, but like, no.
All right. Well, welcome. I mean, you used some unique words, delightful and normal in that department, okay?
I'll take it.
All right, good deal, good deal. Welcome aboard to the team, and I'm quite sure you're gonna have a lot of great success with them, working with a great group.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All righty, that's really awesome. We got a lot of new people joining our team. Impressive, very impressive. All righty, that's gonna bring us down to the next item on the agenda, consent calendar A. Mayor, I move that we approve consent calendar A.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, please start voting.
Counselor Carson?
Yes.
Counselor Daniel?
Yes.
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, counsel. That brings us to the next item on the agenda, presentation from outside agencies, destination development update. I believe that's gonna be Elizabeth Kail.
I'm Elizabeth Sumner with Visit Alamosa, Destination Development Director. The Destination Development Partnership between the city of Alamosa and Visit Alamosa has been in place for just over a year. Since September of twenty twenty-one, we have launched four new programs, expanded the We Love Our National Park campaign, and strengthened several existing collaborative efforts. Thank you for the opportunity to share some highlights from this last year and some of our plans going forward into twenty twenty-three. First Fridays with Visit Alamosa was one of the earliest goals for this position, and it was meant to activate downtown and the newly created programmable space. In March, we launched First Fridays with Visit Alamosa, activating the programmable space with the Open Air Market on Main, showcasing downtown Alamosa as the place to be for art, entertainment, shopping, and dining on the first Friday of every month. That first event in March saw five market vendors and twelve businesses participate. We saw consistent growth over the summer months with increasing numbers in the market on Main, in the downtown merchants participating, and in public attendance. In August, we saw twenty-six market vendors and twenty businesses participating. We've experimented with the series throughout the year, and this Friday will move the market. We've experimented with the series throughout the year and this Friday will move the Market on Main indoors. This is an effort supported by the downtown merchants, having seen the success of this program. First Fridays has already shown the potential to enhance the visitor experience and increase their spending in our destination. It has gained traction with the community with businesses utilizing the series to launch new products, host grand openings and utilize their programmable space without prompting. In two thousand and twenty-three, we'll focus on attracting quality vendors for the Market on Main. We'll continue to help businesses create engaging specials and activities for each date. We'll continue to provide entertainment and business engagement for each event. And we will also co-host select dates with entities who want to leverage the series to promote their own cause or events. Restaurant Week in Alamosa was launched for the first full week of March. This week was chosen based on restaurant owners' input and was meant to generate spending in a typically slower season. Fourteen restaurants participated in two thousand and twenty-two, creating a fixed price menu available for one week only. The program promoted restaurants throughout Alamosa and laid the foundation for a stronger relationship between our lodging properties and our restaurants. In two thousand and twenty-three, we'll focus on including any new or newly interested restaurants in this program, keeping the same week. We were able to work directly with Adam State University on various programs throughout the year, including the We Love Our National Park Campaign, Discover Alamosa as part of ASU's Welcome Week, First Fridays with Visit Alamosa and Restaurant Week. Each of these collaborations were successful and we hope to continue them next year. This fall, we land, we launched, sorry, the Margarita Mayhem Passport, creating an ongoing Alamosa-wide promotion of eight participating restaurants. This program will run until October of two thousand and twenty-three, but we can adapt and reprint the passport before then, should we have new restaurants willing to join the promotion. Looking forward to two thousand and twenty-three, if this passport is successful, we hope to launch another one, maybe with Green Chili, something that's a little more inclusive and a little more signature to our destination. Halloween in Alamosa was one of the first destination development efforts implemented. In two thousand and twenty-one, we promoted various Halloween activities, organized the Here's For The Booze Bar Crawl and coordinated downtown trick-or-treating. This year, we added a skeleton decorating contest and saw eighteen locations participate. What we've heard so far is that the downtown trick-or-treating exceeded last year's excellent numbers. Attendance was down in the bar crawl this year and we've requested feedback from participating restaurants and we'll be evaluating how to best promote the restaurants who want to highlight their themed specials for next year. In two thousand and twenty-three, we'll focus on the trick-or-treating. This element continues to bring the biggest crowd downtown and more importantly into the businesses. One idea is to offer branded totes that families can pick up beforehand. The totes can be reusable and maybe even include some sustainability messaging, trash the trash. We will bring back the skeleton decorating contest, it worked really well to create a festive and spooky downtown. We still love our national park. This initiative, as you know, started as a COVID recovery effort in two thousand and twenty-one. In its first year, with your support, it generated sixty-six thousand, five hundred and eighty dollars in direct traveler spending. In two thousand and twenty-two, we saw a ten percent increase in the voucher redemption rate, meaning more money in our local businesses. We saw an increase in community engagement through events and programs and an increase in business participation through themed displays, specials and general celebrations. The direct impact of the program this year was one hundred forty-eight thousand and three dollars. The campaign was recently recognized on a state level, winning the Governor's Award for Outstanding Community Initiative. With this momentum that we have, we see this program potentially expanding to other gateway destinations with Alamosa serving as the anchor. We appreciate your help in getting this program off the ground and your continued support, we could not do it without you, thank you. We plan to grow this campaign in two thousand and twenty-three with new marketing efforts, continued community engagement and a bigger kickoff celebration downtown. Looking forward, we hope to strengthen each of these programs that we launched or strengthened or developed this year. First Friday specifically has seen a great deal of growth and has the potential to reinforce downtown Alamosa as an attraction. Where both community and visitors can get a taste of what makes our destination, our community, so special. Staying connected to our community, our partners in the industry and our stakeholders is vital to the success of each of these programs. To that end, we've developed a dedicated webpage where you can sign up for an industry newsletter, stay connected, stay in the know and share the page and the resources there with any businesses, constituents that it might be a good fit for. I didn't mention it, but hot off the press, we also developed a dining guide. And if it's appropriate, I will leave these here for you, the official launch is tomorrow, so early release. Thank you so much for your time and I'm happy to answer any questions that you guys might have.
And Mayor, can I jump in real fast?
Sure, sure, please.
I know, I know Elizabeth won't say this because they're very humble, but I just want to say everything they have accomplished during this time period, especially from a merchant engagement perspective. There's other communities that they'll they'll put on events, you can bring the people downtown and sometimes the merchants might still close or they're open, but they're really not engaged. And and the continual effort of working with the merchants and and all of that kind of stuff. They're staying open, they'll have events inside to draw people in, they're using the activated space. And for me personally, since since the activated space was such a controversial issue, having partners help us show this community what the whole point of that space was and and having people use the space and and access the merchants and and say, oh, this is what it was for and and those types of things has just been amazing. And so I I couldn't be more excited about this partnership and I just wanted to make sure and say that because if you haven't been downtown to do First Friday, I recommend doing it, it's this Friday. But when you talk to the merchants and you see the change from before this and to now and how they just, they know what's, they're more engaged to know what's going on, more motivated to participate, all of those types of activities and it's huge, it starts snowballing and that's what's happening and I just want to say thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Brooks, thank you. I'll start on this end and I'll work down this way. We'll start off with Councilor Vio first and Councilor Grego and Councilor Krebs and then Councilor Henson.
Thank you, Mayor, Elizabeth and Kale and the whole team, just thank you so much for the work you're doing. I think everybody's starting to see the fruits of all that labor and all the partnerships. I went to the my first Friday in July, July first, my wife and I went to have supper and I thought I was like in a different city, there were so many people downtown. It was just phenomenal, so I just appreciate all the hard work you guys are doing, thank you.
Councilor Grego?
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
For a long time, it seemed like our downtown was dying, you know, years back. Nobody even got along, nobody even talked to each other. What you guys have done and just just brought them out of the shell and and participating, it's incredible. You know, I've talked to a lot of merchants downtown and they're they they never knew that this something like this could ever exist, so what you guys have done is is is, Jesus, it's incredible. And and they, I don't know, I'm sure they tell you, but they really appreciate what you've done and what you've done for our community and stuff, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilor Grego, Councilor Krebs.
Thank you. I've personally seen all the community turnout and support that has taken place with the initiatives that your team has brought. And to keep it in perspective, they they knuckled down and they made it happen during a pandemic. And to still be successful from that, I am excited that you're leading the way with your team. Your enthusiasm shows through with every event that I bump into you at and I am so looking forward to all your ideas and all what's coming around the corner. I can hardly wait, so thank you so much, both of you.
Thank you, Councilor Krebs, Councilor Henson.
So I'm blessed because I'm on city council, I'm also on the Marketing Tourism Board and then on the Main Street Board as well. So what I see here is all of this synergy that's really coming together. And what's fantastic about it is this energy that everybody's talked about. And from those that are not in the know, it all comes together. And what it happens is that everybody, what they see is just how great everything is going downtown and the fact that your foundation and what you've done and that energy, but that idea that when I go to those Main Street meetings and you go to those as well and how excited everybody is. And yes, sometimes there's some comments and things like that, but it's done in a positive way and how can we continue to make this better? And when I see what's happening and it's all about, let's continue to grow and the positive energy that's going on there and even what Kathy brings to the table and I just see it from a whole downtown perspective, tying in Adam State and all the things there, it's just growing and growing and continuing to build. So I just have to say thank you so much for all you're doing and that synergy is fantastic.
Thank you, Councilor Hensley, I'll go to Zoom and check with them, anybody on Zoom? Nope, okay, so.
Mayor, can I say one last thing?
Yes, please.
I would love for the community to get where our household is on First Friday, which is my sixth grader looks at the calendar and says, Mom, it's First Friday, we're going downtown, right? Because we need more cotton candy, so don't lose the cotton candy lady. Fabulous cotton candy, if you haven't tried it. But it would be great if that's where the households would get is just automatic, First Friday, where you're going to be type of situation. And that and the honey from Alamosa Home Health, that's that's a big hit too.
I would also be remiss if I didn't say, and I say this often to other people when they comment on First Fridays and to your point, Counselor Hensley, it you created this downtown, I just get to play there, thank you for letting me do that. And I hope to see this grow, thank you so much.
Good, and I'm just going to wrap things up to Elizabeth. What you all are doing is just truly amazing, you and your team, you and Savannah and Kale. I see you all there and you having so much fun and people could feed off that positive energy. Congratulations on the Governor's Award for the Community Outstanding Community Initiative Award winner, which is huge. I was very proud when I saw that in the newspaper, so you all are really setting the tone and raising the bar for a lot of communities that are here in the San Luis Valley and I encourage you to continue to do great things like you're doing.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you for your time this evening.
All right, you're welcome, thank you. Awesome, okay, that brings us to the next item on our agenda, on the Boards and Commissions. We have Planning Commission Update.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor and Councilor.
Good to see you.
I appreciate you having me here today to give you an update on what we've done this past year. I hope you don't mind, but I'd like to address Chief Chapman, if that's possible.
Sure.
Just I just wanted to say on behalf of the City of Alamosa and the Planning Commission, thank you for what you've done for our community for all these years. We always look back at our lives and wonder, did we make a difference? And I want you to know you did, you made a huge difference in our community. And now to Bill Stone. As you guys may know, it's Bill Stone, he's already told you and he talked about him being an athlete at Adam State University. He's a little humble because he was a legend at Adam State University. He's a Hall of Famer, played for the LA Rams. He was the top running back in the Rocky Mountain Athletic Conference. His intensity as a player was the same intensity as a coach, will be the same intensity that you will receive as a chief in the Fire Department. What I learned today was when he was standing up here, he still looks like a running back and I looked like a lineman. He was my coach, I was a running back and he was my coach, along with Joel Coleman and did some amazing things. I've always told folks here, I've been here a long time and I always tell people, be careful because no matter how fast you run away from Alamosa and Adam State University, you're going to end up right back here. That's always almost like it, we have a top track team, that's what Adam State and Alamosa is, it's like a track. You can run hard and fast, but you can always end up back here. It's going to be a pleasure to get to know you again, Bill, so you bet. I also want to thank Nicole, Rachel, Deacon for all that they do and all the time that they spent with the Planning Commission, their dedication for this community and dedication of wanting to be here. Deacon, on the day before his having to leave for a wedding, he still stayed in that chair updating us on what needed to be done and what was being done in the community and they're they're an amazing crew, they really are. It's been a pleasure, been doing this for a while and it's a pleasure working with them. I look forward to every every time we meet on Wednesday to learn more about what's happening in our community and the excitement of what I just heard just now in regard to our what's happening in Alamosa. We're a happening place, it's it's pretty neat and it's pretty exciting as a as a community member to see that. So I appreciate everyone in the in the city for being able to do that. What we've been doing this past year is we looked at the annual three-hour annexation plan and had a discussion about it. We also, one of the things that the Planning Commission always wanted to have conversations about was the code. And Deacon and his crew brought in Captain Sam Mastis to come to every Planning Commission meeting. He too has been really dedicated about being here to present every meeting in regard to what's going on with the code. It's really helped us as we go, people in the community reach out to us about what's happening on the streets and what's happening in the yards and what's happening all around. And he's been really good about helping us understand what's happening, what's going on and we're actually seeing that right now. By the time we get here and we have somebody that says, hey, what's going on here? He already is already taking care of it or him and his group has already taken care of it. And it's 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 made a difference, so we really do appreciate that. We only, we had one variance request this past year, so we dealt with that pretty quickly. And as a result, it gave us opportunities to have bigger and deeper discussions that were going on within the community. We reviewed and recommended the city's mass rezoning initiative. It was Nash, it was it was mass, it was it's pretty, the work session all the way to the final. That was some good work that was done. We discussed the area medium income and the relationship to housing. We discussed the sanitary sewer system master plan and what those implications are in the development of the city. And let me tell you, in Alamosa, nothing goes downhill, so we we realize that and what it takes to get something from our end on Sarah Lane all the way over to the other end. So it was quite a, it was quite a presentation and to learn more about how our city's running. We discussed the levy recertification report, the next steps, the issues and concerns that were wrapped around that, that levy recertification, it's going to be massive and it is massive and we really had that opportunity to have input on there. We reviewed, discussed and made recommendations on the twenty twenty-two development code changes, including short-term rentals, pro-housing changes such as the ADU minimum lot size and density. One of the comprehensive plan goals, as we've talked about this before, was to streamline and make the code more efficient. As a result of that, back in two thousand and seventeen, pre-UDC, we had thirty-three applications for the Planning Commission to to look at. This past year, we only had the one. That gave us the opportunity, you know, because the UDC is administratively handled in-house, it it's made things clear, predictable, fair, consistent and timely. And it's given us more of an opportunity to dive deeper into the recommendations and to be able to look at the broader plan that's happening in our in our community. And so those are some of the things that we were able to look at as well. Had the opportunity to look at Iron Horse as it was being developed, gave us an opportunity as a Planning Commission to go back when people were going through and seeing the roads torn up and seeing things that didn't seem like they were happening for us to be able to go and give updates back without having to say, well, why didn't you contact the city? So that made it a little bit easier for us to be that liaison to the community, so I appreciate it. Appreciate serving with the Planning Commission.
Mark, we should appreciate, we appreciate everything you do too and we're going to open up the mic to Council. Mark, we should appreciate, we appreciate everything you do too. And we're gonna open up the mic to, um, Council for any comments at this time. Counsel Grego?
Okay, thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Marco, we appreciate the longevity that you've had on the planning commission. It only builds a continuity of, you know, when we talk about all these different plans, you know? And it, it builds where we were able to, to visit and, and take different actions on it. You know, the planning commission, that, the list that you just listed, you know, all the stuff. And we used to meet with the planning commission at least twice a year. I appreciate the fact that you're bringing us this. This presentation because it's so important, the, the decisions that you guys made, that advise us how to take a different, take the action. It's so important, you know, and Council can't do it all. And people like yourself and your, your board. It, it's, it's, it's important that, that we have you on there. So thank you so much for all the work you guys do.
Thank you, Counsel Grego. Counsel Hensley?
I'll echo everything Counsel Grego said and, and definitely even the thoroughness of your report shows your passion. For what you have for our community. Um, and so I would just really appreciate it. Thank you.
And Mark, I don't see any hands raised on Zoom, so I'll go ahead and wrap things up. Thank you for everything you do. Thank you for your commitment and dedication. You're always at all of those meetings and you're passionate about what you do and it shows. And if I'm not mistaken, you were football superstar too at ASU from what I understand. So just wanted to recognize you for that as well.
He was a coach. He, he made sure that we were all good at what we did. So, and if you all would like to know more about Bill, just, we'll meet on the First Friday.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Take care. Have a good. Appreciate everything you do, my friend. Okay, that brings us to the next item on our agenda, the citizen redistricting tax task force appointments. Ms. Martinez?
Okay, so this is the citizen redistricting task force committee appointments. It's the short-term committee that's gonna look at the populations and demographic information. And make the recommendation to city council on how the ward boundaries should be drawn. Um, so we did do the interviews, um, previously. And then at the last meeting on October nineteenth, you directed staff to just add the appointments of all individuals. Who applied to our next, um, to this agenda without needing to interview our remaining candidates. So there was five of them. But you do know them because they serve on other advisory boards. Um, so you do have ballots in front of you. Um, so you will need to, because you have a policy of how we, um, appoint our board members, you do have to complete the ballot. Um, so if you can fill that out for me and then we'll, um, do the voice motion to appoint them. And Counselor Daniel, you emailed me yours. Counselor Carson, did you get yours over to me yet?
I sent it back to the, I just replied to the email, so it must have been, um, the new clerk that has it. I'm sorry, let me send it to you real quick. Give me thirty seconds. I just had, I replied to that email, so. I just sent it. It doesn't have a subject or anything.
Okay. Okay, perfect. Okay, so after those ballots came back, so you guys have appointed all twelve members, um, to this board. So we'll get out notice to them tomorrow, letting them know, um, that they've been appointed. And then. We'll let them know as soon as we know when the dates will be for their meetings.
Okay, thank you.
So if I can just get a vo- voice motion for that?
Okay, voice motion.
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion?
I'll second.
Again, any further discussion? Okay. Start voting, please.
Counselor Carson?
Yes.
Counselor Daniel?
Yes.
And the motion carried unanimously.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Council. Brings us to the next item on the agenda. Uh, under city clerk, first reading of ordinance number twenty-one, twenty-two.
Okay, Council, this item, this ordinance is before you for first reading. Um, this is the ordinance establishing a local festival permit. Um, so on May eighth, two thousand twenty-one, Governor Pola signed into law, the Senate Bill twenty-one dash zero eighty-two. Which amends the liquor code to create a state festival permit and, and allows the implementation of lo- a local festival permit. Um, the act authorizes cities to create this local permit to provide local guidance and oversight on festivals. So this law became effective September two thousand twenty-one and created this new license of a festival permit. Which amended the existing wine festival permit to allow o- other alcohol licensed types to hold a permit as well. Um, it authorizes the following beverage licensees to obtain a festival permit. So these are already, um, licensed establishments in town. Um, so those licensees that could apply for a festival permit include beer and wine licensees, hotel and restaurant licensees, taverns. Beer pubs, vintners restaurants, distillery pubs, winery or limited winery licenses, spirits manufacturers and beer manufacturers. Um, without a local permit, uh, implemented, then this permit only gets, um, done with the state. Um, under the code, it does allow us to create this local permit within our city limits. It's not required, but if no local permit is created, then they only have to go to the state. And we would only get notified of the festival happening within ten days. That's all that's required. Um, so this ordinance is creating this local permit and it is, um, having it do. I believe thirty days prior. Um, and if you read the ordinance. I'm sure you've read the ordinance. Um, it would still allow all those other ones and they would have to come to the local. Um, they can still have. Uh, they can hold up to twelve within a year, but they do have to come and get a local permit. And we've based our fees for this permit off of what our special event permit fee is, which is a hundred dollars per day. Um, the festival permit only allows for a festival to be held seventy-two hours long. And then they can hold the twelve consecutive and just let us know. And we've done that. If they do a consecutive festival, we've had it. They notify us within fifteen days in the year. Um, there is. In the ordinance, um, an area for violations, so they're subject to the same revocation, suspension and enforcement provisions. That would otherwise apply to their licensee. So, um, pretty similar, nothing too, too long there. Um, the application, we are gonna have them, they have to specify the license premise for, of where the festival's gonna be held. It has to be filed with the city clerk's office at least thirty days before the festival. And then they need to establish their physical boundaries of the festival permit area. In a manner to assure the satisfaction of the local liquor license authority. Um, making sure that the alcohol is kept in the boundaries of the area, complying with security requirements, if any. And then agree to like any nuisance or issues, including trash removal and noise. Um, there is an area, if we deny a festival, um, it's for only the following reasons. A documented history of violations, the filing of an incomplete or late application. Um, or a finding that the application, if it was granted, would result in a violation of state or local laws, rules or regulations. Including limitations contained in the city's unified development code. Um, and that's pretty much the ordinance there. So we'll have it for first reading today and then second reading at our next meeting.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Martinez. Uh, Counsel Veo?
So we've talked about this before. I'm just gonna say, uh, let's make a motion. I'm gonna move that we approve on first reading. Ordinance number twenty-one dash twenty-two and set it for a public hearing on November sixteenth at seven PM or soon thereafter.
Hey, we have a motion? I, I know I'm like.
Second.
Okay, we have a, we have a motion and a second. And, uh, we're gonna open it up for discussion. Uh, Counsel Henson, Hensley mentioned, uh, Carson has his hand up. Counsel Carson?
Uh, I, I don't wanna hold this up any longer. I'm sorry. I just wanted to make a quick comment. Uh, I think this is a good communication tool for the city. More than anything, we, we discussed that pre, um, you know, during the work session. So. Uh, I do believe this is a good ordinance because, um, otherwise, uh, state ordinance that we have no knowledge or communication of. Can kinda get out of hand. So thank you guys for working on this. Appreciate it.
Please start voting, please.
Counselor Daniel?
Yes.
Counselor Carson?
Yes.
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay, thank you. That brings us down the agenda to, uh, committee reports. Do we have anybody with committee reports? Nope. Oh, Counsel Grego?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and start. I have a couple, uh, I met with the, uh, Alamosa seniors. This, uh, past, uh, Thursday. And, uh, they went ahead and had a membership board meeting. Where they were re-elected different board positions and stuff. They're gonna have a Christmas bazaar on the, uh. Tenth of December. They're looking for vendors. So far, they've got eight vendors, uh, selling different stuff. So they're looking for vendors and stuff. And I didn't bring my, uh, my tickets to try to sell some more tickets. So we're just still trying to sell some more ticket stuff. So, but, uh, they're getting ready for that. Pretty much, uh, their early iron, with the early iron, they served about two hundred and forty people. They're able to make some good money there. And they've taken different trips and stuff. So that's all I have on the seniors. On the, uh, homeless coalition, we had a meeting there. And we had a great presentation from our city manager and our counselor Daniels. So they went over a, uh. Presentation was given at CML and kinda showed the board the different ways other communities are answering the homeless population. And they, Heather and, like I said, Chris did a good job in presenting how, uh, Boulder went ahead and did. Their program and stuff. And we had a lot of good conversation. And in fact, we had a, a good turnout with the homeless board. So. And I don't know if you had anything else under that, but there was a good, a good, good meeting. Also, uh, we're having a, uh, on. November, the, the, the tenth. The twelfth, thank you. Yeah. We're having our, uh, Alamosa Veterans Memorial Run, Run Walk. So all of you guys that want, that are runners or even walkers, we want you to participate in something like that. Come in. And, uh, help us with that. So. And also Veterans Day is coming up the eleventh. So we invite everybody to come and join us for Veterans Day. So. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Counsel Grego. Thank you for bringing up those important events that are coming up too as well. Any other, uh, committee reports? Okay, don't see any more lights on or hands raised. So we're going down the agenda to staff announcements.
It's only eight, so I think I'm gonna cover like a whole bunch of stuff. Just.
See on the back Rolex here and there.
I'm just joking. I, I'm not sure what they bet on. So as the chief works his way up here, um, to answer any questions. Provide any information we can related to the shooting, um, knowing that it's still an ongoing investigation and, and may not be able to offer much. I do wanna update you on three different signs. We have received our wayfinding signs. Um, we're making sure they're what we ordered and, and they're in good condition. Streets has been behind from a staffing perspective and just workload. So I'm not sure when we're gonna get those up because we need to get those projects that are more sensitive to the temperatures done, um, before we do those. And so, uh, it, it may be sometime this year, it may be in the spring. So. But we do have the signs in and, and can get those up at some point. We also have the bases. And I think if we haven't already, we'll be getting the, um, signs that warn of the pedestrian zone. Which is the double the fine, um, in that, in the downtown area. So we've done some education. Um, we will be doing enforcement, but those signs, if they're not already up, are gonna be up very, very soon. So if you get questions. Um, just want you to be prepared that those are coming. And then the last set of signs. I wanted to update you on is we finally got the PO number from CDOT, so we can finish ordering the pedestrian safety flashing. Signs. So now that we know the money is still there, we've got the PO number. Um, we can, we can finish that part of it and, and get those ordered. But again, um, working through CDOT. And if any of their requirements have changed from an engineering perspective, it, it may not be during the winter time that we get those up. But we're at least making some progress on that project. So three different sets of signs, all moving forward at different stages. Chief, I didn't know if you wanted to share any information related to updates on, on Molly or anything else.
Yeah, um, so y'all are aware of the incident which occurred. We've done a couple of press releases on that. Uh, a press conference where clearly I can't answer a whole lot, um, especially since it was about fifteen hours after the incident took place. Um, update is Molly, Officer Heaney was released from, uh, the hospital yesterday. Uh, we met with her, met with her, along with about a hundred, uh, CSP and CSPD, that's Colorado Springs PD. Officers as they, uh, showed respect when she was being wheelchared out. So that was really great of their, their agency. Um, also, we can't forget the, uh, the other victim. Okay, we have another victim on this case. Um, he is stable. I actually spoke to his son today. He's a great kid. Um, you know, they're going through tough times as well. So. It's about the best I got. Um, can't release a whole lot. You obviously heard me say that a few times. Go ahead, sir. Can't advise you of the location at this point. Any, uh, any other comments for the chief?
I just wanted to, it was a big event, so I just wanted to make sure we, we were here to answer any questions that we could, in case you had some.
Yeah, I don't know that it's really answering questions. It's just really about giving you guys the info, letting you know that your officer is doing fantastic. And so is the, I can't say the, uh, citizen's doing fantastic, but I can tell you that they're talking and they're stable and, you know, just keep praying. So, thanks.
Thank you. I'm gonna, um, I was gonna do this on the, the council comment, but if you're okay. So I actually know Molly pretty well. And I'm just, she did want me to pass one thing on. So her and I have been chit-chatting. And she just wanted to tell counsel. That she appreciates all that every, what everybody's doing and that she's in very good spirits and she plans to make a full recovery.
She will.
Yeah, so I just, she asked me to pass that on, so.
Thank you, Counsel Hensley. Thank you, Chief.
That's it for my staff update.
Oh, I thought you were going thirty minutes. Okay, alright, cause you could do thirty minutes. We know you can. Alright. That brings us down to, um, council comments as we wrap things up. I'll recognize all the mics first. Uh, we'll start off with, uh, Counsel Veo, Counsel Cribs, then Counsel Henson. And then Counsel Grego.
Thank you, Mayor. And I was gonna save my comments for city coun- uh, council comment as well. Just prayers to our, uh, police force chief and the whole team. And, and there's a lot of love up here for you guys. And we certainly back the blue and all you guys do and. You put your lives on, you guys put your lives on line for us every day and we just appreciate it. We want you to know that. Um, also, I want to, uh, recognize a friend of mine who passed away last week. Uh, he was my assistant coach. And his name was Jake Medina. And he was all, and how this ties into the city is. He owned a concrete company, um. He did a lot of work for, uh, the City of Alamosa. He did, uh, his guys did the first, uh, phase of First Street. And he, and, and then ever since, his group has been doing the, uh, concrete replacement program around town. Elite construction. Uh, his, the motto was, uh, the, the, the small guy with the big work ethic or something like that. So. Uh, he did a lot of work for our city. I know he worked a lot with Harry. Uh, just a great guy. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Veo. Okay, so since I've forgotten who was next, we're just gonna go this way, okay? I'll start off with, uh, Counsel Grego and then, uh, Counsel Cribs and then Counsel Heaney.
I also wanted to, to bring up, uh, this week, we lost a, a, a great person, a great leader. In Marguerite Salazar. She, uh, she helped not only, uh, the City of Alamosa, the San Luis Valley. To provide health to a lot of disadvantaged people. She put, supported us here locally. She was supported us at the state level and even at the federal level. She was a great lady, a real. She was a great lady, a real, real down-to-earth person and uh, like I said, we last when you lose people like that, it it hurts, you know. She, she passed away this week, so I just wanted to let everybody know that.
Thank you, uh, Counsel Gregor. Counsel Krebs?
Thank you. Um, my comment is I had the the honor and the privilege to be part of the ribbon cutting of the Iron Horse um apartment complex. We were able to tour um all the different size ones, one bedroom through three bedroom, and get a look at their clubhouse and what they are trying to offer the occupants that are currently there and busy moving in. And it was, it was very refreshing to see the the dedication of the people that were building it and their commitment to once they got it going and they got to know the community and they got to know the people here, their their commitment to finishing the project. So that was, it was very, it was very good to see.
Thank you, uh, Counsel Kreb.
Mayor, if I can just add, so we're super excited that Iron Horse is open for multiple reasons. Um, but I just, I don't ever wanna miss an opportunity to point out, they're open and they already have a waitlist. Just like every other housing provider has a waitlist. And so I just, any opportunity to to talk about what the needs are from a housing perspective, I think is important. So as exciting as it is for multiple reasons, um, we we still thankfully have a lot of wheels turning to try to keep addressing the housing because it's a big deal.
Thank you, Ms. Brooks. Appreciate that. Okay, Counsel Hensley?
Um, so I felt like this was um the longest holiday, uh, Halloween season. Um, it went from Friday to Monday. I know kids were um dressed up every day, so they definitely got their wear and tear out of their costumes, but it was really great. And I will say, so obviously Saturday, the downtown was fantastic and doing the trick-or-treating down there. And all of the different businesses were very engaged and it was very exciting. And then the event at the Armory was fantastic. And um both years um were great. And last year, I think last year was the first year, was that correct? That we did it? I don't know, but it felt like last year, um, it was really good. This year seemed like they had more of a path on how to do it. Um, I don't know how many kids go in there, but they love it and the amount of candy they get and everybody is just so excited and has a lot of fun. Um, so just really good things that we do in our community and all the other events in between, so just wanted to comment on that.
Thank you, Counsel Hensley. Okay, I'll go to the Zoom participants. If you have any comments, raise your hand and I'll recognize you. If not, I'll wrap things up. Okay, Counselor uh Daniel?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I just, I really, I kinda wanted to echo the sentiments um regarding Marguerite Salazar. Um, she's a hu- huge leader in our community, um, and so sending thoughts and thanks to our family. But also just celebrating, um, you know, this, we do have an election coming up. Um, so I wanted to remind everyone to get out and vote. Um, next week, if you have not already submitted your your ballot, please, please do so. Um, and then really just continuing on um the the work that all the city staff have done. I know not everybody who's maybe watching the meeting knew about the work session ahead of time. But the trail system plans, I was very excited um about that work session and I'm looking forward to seeing more um coming from that organization that is helping us design that and from our Parks and Rec team. I think they're doing an amazing job. So thank you all for everything that you're doing, um, that just get out and vote if you haven't done it yet.
Thank you, Counsel Daniel. Okay, see any other hands raised or any mics on, so I'll go ahead and wrap things up uh for this, for this meeting. Uh, first, my thoughts and prayers go out to uh Officer Heaney. And um, I pray that she has a speedy recovery and a healthy recovery as well, and I I know that she will. Uh, I wanna commend Chief Anderson for the way that he and his team handled the press conference uh to keep the community informed, all of the social media posts that was uh sent out as well as the uh press release, keeping everyone in the loop to dispel any misinformation that was floating around there. I think all of that is so crucial and important uh when you have a emergency crisis like that. Also, I'd like to reach out and just thank all of the different law enforcement agencies and first responders who came from different parts of our San Luis Valley, from the Montevista Police Department, the A S U uh Police Department. I believe Canales County Sheriff Office, Alamosa County Sheriff's Office, the D A's office have representation there as well. I think that show that we have a united front here in the valley uh and how that we are supporting our local law enforcement officers and 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 team. And then um finally, I would like to uh send a shout out to the Alamosa High School Girls Cross Country State Championship Team, who did a wonderful job this past weekend. All right, Counsel uh Veo?
Oh, and I do have something too.
Sure.
Sorry, Mayor, you you spurned some some things for me as.
Okay.
Uh, yes, the the cross-country team, the Montevista Band won state championship again. And then uh there's a lot of, it's playoff season now for fall sports, so Alamosa Football's hosting a playoff game on Saturday. The volleyball team is hosting a regional. Sanford Football and Volleyball's hosting something, football and volleyball. Um, Montevista's hosting a home football game too. Sierra Grand's hosting a home football game too, so there's a lot of, lot of playoffs going on this weekend. Good luck to all the valley teams.
Thank you, Counsel uh Veo. Uh, Ms. Brooke?
I did forget, I wanted to remind city council, the last time we had dinner with county commissioners, we picked the next date for our dinner, which is sneaking up on us. That is November fourteenth. And so we are gonna be connecting. I don't think we've picked a place yet or or anything like that. Um, and it should be on your calendars. I think the invite came from Susanna um type of situation. But um just wanted to make sure that you're looking for updates once we connect again with the county for location and and those other details. But that is coming up, November fourteenth, the dinner with the county commissioners.
All right, thank you, Ms. Brooks. And uh, the last thing I was gonna say was the Alamosa High School Football Team. Uh, their game is this Saturday at two o'clock. I encourage everyone to come out and support them if if possible. Thank you, everybody. Have a super fantastic night. This meeting is officially adjourned.